I'm the town attorney and I will be running this meeting for the shortest possible time until you do the first thing you need to do, which is nominate and elect a chairman.
I'll make a motion to nominate Bob Anderson, Chair?
Second.
All in favor? It passes. Mr. Chairman, you are now in control.
Well, I'll give it back to you.
Would you like to hear from me?
Well, I think we should get a vice president too. We always had one, just in case I don't show up. I'd like to recommend Dan.
Second.
As a second vice president. All in favor? Okay, your vice anyways.
Actually, you need a secretary too.
Brenda, usually is our secretary.
She's downstairs, the other board meeting is now.
The way that the ordinance is actually written, the secretary, the recording secretary is supposed to be a member of the board.
Yeah, well, she was, but I forgot she got promoted to being on the code enforcement thing. So before that, she was our...
Need to get from somebody who is here.
I nominate Lois Bishop.
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
I think we got all the offices in.
All right. So what I'd like to do tonight is just to give you a quick, as quick as possible, overview of what this board is intended to do, kind of how you do it, hitting the highlights, and then I'll be happy to take any questions that anybody has about pretty much anything. The zoning board of appeals, in Acton at least, has basically two functions: hearing variance requests and appeals from decisions of the code enforcement officer. So appeals and variances. Back in the old days, when I was on this board, we had a lot more work than you guys will probably have and that Bob had when he was chairman. Main, big reason for that is that after I got off the board, and Bob may remember, I don't, it was probably about 15 years or so ago, the ordinance was amended to take away this board's ability to grant variances from shoreline setbacks. And that was probably 90 percent of the stuff that the board saw when I was chairman is variances in the shoreline zone. So you're just not seeing those anymore. So that's why there's a lot less work for this board to do, at least right now. Those are the two things. Variances, as you may know, are designed to provide a way when, usually you're going to see them nine times out of 10 with grandfathered lots. So a person has a non-conforming lot that is grandfathered because it pre-existed the adoption of the zoning ordinance, or it pre-existed a particular change in the zoning ordinance. So what you'll typically see is those grandfathered lots are sub-sized, they're not big enough for current zoning. So because it's a small lot to start with, people have, the people, because it's grandfathered, they have a right to get a building permit for the sub-standard sized lot. However, they still have to comply with the setback requirements in the zoning ordinance. Quite often, they may have a problem with that because by definition, they're lots smaller than we're contemplating most buildable lots. That's where the variance comes in. They have the ability to come before this board and ask for a variance from whatever setback they have a problem with, once again, as long as it is not the 100-foot setback from the shoreline, from the water, which you can't deal with any longer. If they come before you with that type of variance request, there are certain factors that you are required to consider in deciding whether or not to grant the variance, and those are laid out in our ordinance, they're laid out in the handbook that you have. They are, applying those standards is a perpetual struggle. Because honestly, if you apply them as written, you would be, you'd pretty much be taking the position that Groucho Marx took when he was dean of the college, and I think it was Horse Feathers, which is, whatever it is, I'm against it. Because it is almost impossible for, in today's world, to meet all of those standards. And I think that, my feeling has always been, as an attorney and when I was on the board, that some of those standards may not mean exactly what they say. And I'm not going to try to go through those standards with you, because I'm not here to try to influence how you may deal with any variances that come before you. But you need to take a look at them. If you do get a variance issue, and this is one of the things we can talk about, everything that comes before you is initiated with an application. The petitioning party is required to complete an application with sufficient specificity so that you can figure out what it is they want. If you can't, you have to send it back and say, you want to get a shot at this? Because, I don't know what you're talking about. So if it's a variance request, if you look at the forms, I don't know if you've seen them yet, but the applicant is required to actually address each one of those criteria. Tell us why you meet this one. Tell us why you meet this one. Tell us why you meet this one. So you have something to start with, at least why the applicant thinks the applicant meets the requirements for variance. And after the applicant fully presents his or her case, you'll decide whether they did or did not. You are required to issue, or are, required may be too strong a word, you are urged to issue a written decision on each thing that comes before you. You are not required to create a magnum opus, okay? It doesn't have to be long, wordy, or difficult. Typically, I think, what we used to do, and I, Bob may have done the same thing, if we've got a variance appeal in front of us, we just sit there with the form. Okay, here's number one. Here's the board's finding on number one. The applicant met the requirement of number one, or did not, three to two, four to one. Everything this board does has to be by at least a majority of four. So in order to grant a variance, you have to have four votes in favor of granting the variance. That means four votes in favor of each, of finding that each one of the criteria has been met. Same thing with an appeal from the code enforcement officer. Four board members must agree in order to overturn whatever the ruling or the finding of the code enforcement officer is. So it's not, it's not simple majority. And if you, and your quorum is four, obviously. So if you meet here for one of these events and there are not four of you, the evening's over, and we try again another time. Because you have to have at least four for a quorum. So, that's pretty much the deal on the variances. They, as I said before, I don't know how many of them you'll see, because they were typically, somebody wanted a deck that was too close to the water in the shoreline zone, somebody wanted an extra stairway that was too close to the water in the shoreline zone.
Yeah, all the ones I've been on is just non-conforming lots. That's all I've seen, that's what I've been on.
And we don't seem to have that many issues, at least I don't remember that we did. I can't, I can't remember what I had for breakfast, but I can't remember a variance request that came before the board when I was on it that wasn't in the shoreline zone. It just doesn't seem to happen much outside of the shoreline zone.
Yeah, I did eight of them shoreline, eight to 10 of them. It was all shoreline.
That's where they're all packed. That's where all the lots are, little tiny lots. So many of our developments on the water here were created years and years and years ago, way before there was any zoning or anybody even thought about zoning. And so you've got these tiny little lots, and so that's where most of the issues come Before I go on to talk about the appeals from the code enforcement officer, any particular questions about variances? What do we do? How do we do it? This procedure that you're going to follow in pretty much anything that comes in front of you. You're going to, you know, the chairman, each chairman has his own way of, his own comfort zone and his own way of doing things. Typically, you're going to read the application into the record so that, you know, everybody has a record of what is before the board that night. I don't know what provisions can be made for you in terms of actually recording these to supplement the notes that the secretary takes, but if it's possible, that's always a good idea. I don't know whether...
Record it.
Actually, record it.
I was going to say, they actually record it for us right now, that's what he's doing.
Well, that's true, so I guess we've got this. What am I worried? We didn't, we didn't have that back then.
In case she doesn't make it, if there's nobody there, because we never had them. We only had maybe once or twice that you might need a tape recorded, in case she doesn't, without anybody to film it, you know?
Well, now it seems that almost every committee, board, whatever, if there's a meeting scheduled, Jennifer...
Make sure that you're...
Make sure that, you know, it's going to be recorded.
Yeah.
Because they want everything recorded.
Yeah, there's manpower finding somebody to run it, you know.
They've actually been really good about it.
Yeah.
I've got to give them lots of credit. They bounce a lot of things around, but they do...
Do me a favor and read these and explain how each one, because some of them are like kind of stupid and they might not, that's the application questions.
Okay.
You can explain maybe.
Yeah, I'll come back to that in one second.
Yeah.
So anyway, typically, to start the meeting, the chairman will read the application into the record. Then you can, you consider procedural questions first. Number one, is this person who's in front of us today, well, actually, the first one you're probably going to start with is jurisdictional. So that's usually pretty simple, because you have jurisdiction over two things. You have jurisdiction over variances, and you have jurisdiction over appeals from the code enforcement officer. If it's anything other than one of those two things, the board doesn't have jurisdiction over it. But that's, you know, we like to go through the same sort of procedure every time, because that way we don't miss something. So the chairman says, we will first determine whether or not we have jurisdiction. I believe we have jurisdiction. Does anybody think we don't have jurisdiction? No? Good. Let's move on. Next question is, does this particular applicant have standing to be before the board? Again, usually pretty obvious. Usually, he owns the property that the dispute or the variance is about. That's pretty clear. Where it can become a little bit less clear, it's not, it's never going to probably become unclear in a variance, because if I don't have some interest in the property, why would I come here asking for a variance? So I'm either going to be the owner, or I'm going to have a purchase and sale agreement, which is fine, to confer standing. But if you're looking at an appeal from something the code enforcement officer does, you might, you could get into a slightly more complicated situation about standing, because sometimes somebody over there is not happy with the code enforcement officer and wants to appeal a decision, but somebody over there may not be able to. In order to appeal, to have standing to appeal the code enforcement officer's decision, you have to have in some way been injured or affected by the decision. Again, some people are easy, the landowner, okay? Abutters are always considered to be affected by the decision. Once you get past those two things, it becomes much, you know, much dicey your question as to whether or not that person has standing. That person must, as a threshold issue, must convince the board that they are somehow affected directly by this in some way other than just as a citizen of the town of Acton, okay? Because that's what you hear sometimes, people say, well, I'm a citizen of this town, and I want to see the zoning ordinance enforced. Well, thank you, so do I, but that doesn't give you standing to come in here and appeal that guy's building permit.
You're saying it's the owner of the property and/or the abutters?
There could be others. It's not, it's, not everyone is automatically disqualified, but it's a tough standard if you don't fall into one of those categories. Because once again, you have to show what the court's called particularized harm. How are you specifically affected by this in a way different from everybody else in the town of Acton? That's tough. But it's not impossible. If I sat here long enough...
If they're not abutters.
Right. Abutters are automatic, okay? But everybody else has got to show particularized harm.
Now, you can have an attorney represent that person if he can't make, because I know we have a lot of them from out of state that can't make it up here for whatever reason, you know, and they have an attorney here representing them, so...
That's right. Again, they still have to have this...
Right, representation of something, right.
Yes, if they have standing, they can have a representative appear for them, yeah. So once you've done that, and once you've decided you have jurisdiction and the person in front of you has standing, then typically, you're going to proceed to the hearing. And normally, what you're going to do is you're going to have the applicant and any witnesses the applicant may wish to present, proceed first. As much as possible, you're going to let them do that without any interruption. Questions come later. So unless there is some, you know, significant breach of decorum or something, you're going to let, or they just get, I mean, the chairman is here to control it. So I mean, you know, every once in a while, you'll get somebody who just sort of goes off into never, never land, and you've got to reel them back in again and say, ah, could we get back to what we're actually here for? That's okay. Beyond something like that, you're going to try to let them say what they want to say until they're done, okay? From there, you know, the board and the chairman can do however you prefer. Some chairman I know, some boards would like to start and ask questions right then of the applicant before any opposing people are heard. You can do that if you want to. Otherwise, you can just move right along to whoever might be there to speak in opposition to it and let them have their opportunity to speak.
As long as there are no butter.
As long as there, yeah, that's, that's...
That's the thing you've got to keep careful on, because it's not a public hearing.
Well, that will be, that will be a public hearing. And that's a very good point, though, because that's, that's a question that comes up. What does public hearing mean exactly? Okay? Because this isn't like a selectman's meeting where everybody has an opportunity to speak as long as they do.
No, but a public hearing is something that's broadcasted out to everybody.
No, no.
In the newspapers and stuff like that, that's...
But what you're doing, in your capacity as a zoning board, is you're adjudicating, okay? You've got an issue in front of you that you have to make a decision on based on the evidence, or whatever you want to call it, that is presented to you. So the question is, for you, when we talk about a public hearing, is who gets to speak in that public hearing? It's a public hearing, but it doesn't necessarily mean that every member of the public gets to speak.
Okay.
But this is a little bit different from standing, okay? Standing is about, can this person bring this in front of us in the first place? You don't necessarily have to have standing to speak at the hearing, okay? If I have standing and I want to bring in my builder to present evidence to the board, my builder on his own doesn't have standing, but he can, he can speak because I do and he's my witness. And same, same thing with, you know, again, as we talked about, the abutters or anybody else who has a, has demonstrated particularized harm has a right to be heard at the hearing. Everybody else is at the discretion of the board. So if there are members of the general public who indicate that they want to be heard, it's up to you whether you want to hear them or not. They don't have a right to be heard, even though it's a public hearing. Public has a right to be there, they don't necessarily have a right to speak. So if somebody says, I want to say something, and you say, well, who are you? What do you, what is it that you think you can contribute to this hearing? Then you can decide whether you want to hear them or not, okay? Once that, once you have heard everybody that wants to be heard and then you think is entitled to be heard, you decide whether you have questions for either the applicant, the applicant's witnesses, the people in opposition, and the board asks any questions, obviously, that the board wants to ask. A person in opposition also, through the, you'll see this language in the, in these, in our rules and in those rules as you read them, it says that, that persons in opposition may question the applicant or the applicant's witnesses through the chairman. Now, I don't think that means what it sounds like it means. It doesn't mean that the chairman, that they say it to the chairman and then the chairman has to repeat it. I believe that what that means is they must be recognized by the chairman. And once the chairman recognizes them, they can ask their question, okay? But there is, there is a right to do that. Again, it's within your control, you can, you can stop it if you feel that it's becoming repetitive, or abusive, or anything else you don't like, okay? But that's the procedure. They do have, you know, they do have the ability to ask questions of the applicant. Once everybody, once the board and any members in opposition have asked the questions that they want to ask, or that you've permitted them to ask, the hearing is closed, the board deliberates. This is always a tricky area, because they can hear you deliberating. You don't go into executive session to deliberate, you deliberate right here. And most people, including myself, don't have the self-control when they hear they, wait, wait, that's not what I said. Once again, the board has to decide if somebody starts to talk or wants to talk, what is it that you want to say? And if it's something, you know, every once in a while, there is something that may have slipped by that should have been considered, and if you think it's important enough, you have the ability, the chairman has the ability, or the board by vote has the ability to reopen the hearing and take that additional information. That should be rare, okay? Because I, what the chairman should do, and I'm sure Bob has done before, is you give everybody the opportunity, say, now, are you sure? Is there anything else? Okay? Good. Close. So you're not going to open it up just because somebody said, oh gee, you know, I wanted to tell you what my uncle Bob would have... You know? But you can. If you feel, if the chairman or the board by its own vote feels it's necessary, you can reopen, but again, that should be rare. That's it. The procedure, that procedure is the same whether it's a variance request or an appeal. Appeals are a little bit of a different animal. Would you, do you want me to go through this first?
When you finish whatever you want to say, and then just, you can explain them as you go along and...
Well, I can try.
I know, it, sometimes it's confusing.
I'll do this now, because this is, what Bob has put in front of me is the four criteria for determining hardship, because the, and I didn't say that word, but that's the critical word. The board, it has to be, there has to be a hardship in order for a variance to be granted. And the four criteria that you're going to be looking at, probably more often than you want, number one is, the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted. Nobody knows what that means. Just, nobody knows what that means. You can find 10 attorneys, half a dozen judges, and probably get at least out of that group seven or eight different opinions as to what that means. And it can be interpreted liberally, it can be interpreted very, very narrowly, and it's been interpreted both ways at different times. The strict interpretation of it, and when you read through your, if you read through your materials from MMA, they're trying to be helpful, but they definitely lobby for the strict interpretation. The strict interpretation of that is that you can't use it for anything without a variance. That's the strict interpretation. Personally, I don't buy that one quite so much. I've always thought that what that means is that you look at what the property could have been used for, because remember, in all of these cases, we're pretty much going to be dealing with properties that are grandfathered, non-conforming uses. So they all existed before there was any zoning. So I've always felt that you sort of have to look at, what could you have done with this property before this zoning ordinance got enacted? Now that the zoning ordinance has been enacted, what can you do? And if the answer is nothing, then to me, that sort of means that the property is not yielding a reasonable return without some help, okay? But, that's just one lawyer's opinion. And as I said, if you, when you read through that MMA stuff, you're going to, you're going to get the impression, and by the way, it's very useful, it's very good, these people know what they're doing. They're a tremendous resource for towns and for boards, but you're still reading one attorney's opinion. Just keep that in mind. It isn't the Bible, but it's real good, but it's not the Bible, okay? So, you're going to have determinations as to what that means. Now, sometimes if you grant a variance, sometimes if you refuse a variance, it gets appealed to the superior court.
Superior.
That's where it goes from here, if somebody doesn't like your decision. And then a judge is going to have to review what you did, review the same facts that, they don't get another hearing. The judge reviews the same facts, the same evidence that you looked at, and substitutes his decision for yours. Now, that's not quite that. The judges are required to give significant deference to the board's decision. But the, a judge can find that, no, they didn't really prove that it couldn't yield a reasonable return in the absence of the variance, so you shouldn't have given it to them, or vice versa. Very seldom vice versa, frankly. Court is much more likely to overturn the granting of a variance than a denial of a variance. Because if the board decides that it is going to take a strict interpretation of these four criteria, they're entitled to, even if it means that basically, nobody ever gets a variance. Because that's pretty much what's going to happen if these criteria are applied strictly. Because, you know, the example that I see sometimes and that comes up is, you've got a piece of property in the shoreline zone, and you can't figure out how you're going to get a house in there, because you're just too close to the water. What, that you can't do anything about, but what you'll see sometimes, and in fact, it's the case I had when you weren't there. It was a weird shaped lot, and it was possible to get a house on that lot, a very imaginative house, but it was possible to get a house on that lot 100 feet away from the water, but you're going to be right up next to everything else. Right up next to the road, right up next to the, right up next to the sideline, because it just, it was a very tiny lot. And in that particular case, the variance was granted. But there have been other cases similar to that where, not necessarily on this board, but in other boards, where the reasoning has been, hey, it's a shorefront lot. You can have a picnic table out there, you know, you can have a fire pit, you can get plenty of use out of that property without a house on it. Variance denied. So it's very, it's very much a judgment call. There's no, nobody's ever going to be, if anybody claims they can give you a rule that you can apply every time one of, to answer that criteria, every time one of these comes in front of you, they're lying. Because you're just going to have to look at them case by case by case and see if you believe it. And it's going to take four of you, or they're not going to get it. The need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. Once again, MMA is going to try to explain to you what that means. You'll have to decide yourself whether you're convinced by the explanation that they provide. I frankly, wasn't. The first part of that sentence is not that hard to understand, it's the second part that flubs it up. The need for variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property. The property's small, the property's oddly shaped, the property slopes a lot, the, you know, there's a very limited, the property has very limited soil suitable for a septic system. All things that are unique to the property. I don't know what the rest of that sentence means. Does that mean that if everybody has bad soil, or limited soil, you can't grant a variance because the whole neighborhood is bad soil? That's kind of what MMA says, makes no sense to me. The general conditions in the neighborhood, honestly...
It's the weirdest questions they ask, though. It is.
I don't know who, where did this one, where did this come from, Bob?
Oh, I figured, it's been so long, I figured where I got it from, but...
There's comments here, this is, question two simply means that the property in question must bear the burden to determine whether a variance should or should not be granted. I agree with that absolutely. The rise or decline of the condition of the neighborhood cannot be used as a check to support the granting of a variance. That makes more sense to me than what MMA says, okay? In other words, you don't get to say, well, I should get a variance because, I mean, everything around here is crap. You know? You don't get to point to the neighborhood and say, I get a variance because of this. I think that, again, we don't, we don't do waterfront variances anymore, but you used to see people trying to make that argument, that say, well, everybody's close to the water. So why can't I be close to the water? Well, sorry, they built before the zoning ordinance came along, you're not. So that's why. So I think that that one is clearer than sometimes it might seem. You've just got to say, you know, your problem is caused by your lot. If we determine that your problem is caused by your lot, we can move on, you still may, you still have a shot. The granting of a variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. That one's usually not too hard when you're dealing with setback variances, because, especially down in the, in these old waterfront divisions, because yeah, because in fact, everybody is packed very close together, and packing another one in there is not really going to alter the character of the neighborhood, usually, as long as it is not a McMansion or, you know, something else that... or you know, something else that clearly is inappropriate for the area. So that one is usually the easiest of the four for the, for the applicant to meet. The hardship is not the result of action taken by the applicant, by the appellant or the prior owner. I think that's fairly clear, what you, although it's, sometimes it's, it's, it's a hard one, the, probably the most typical example that you, you might struggle with if you see it coming in front of you, is somebody builds a house, they do everything they're supposed to do, they think. They go to the, they go get a building permit, they do all of the stuff they're supposed to do, and after the foundation is in, sometimes even after the house is built, somebody realizes that whoever measured the, the road setback, measured from the tar, not from the right-of-way, and as you, as you might be aware, most roads, let's say they're, if they're the older, like two or three road roads, so they're like forty feet wide, but that's the right-of-way. It's, the paved surface is twenty feet wide, or twenty-five feet wide. So when somebody goes out and measures from the road surface, the right-of-ways are really here, so they measure twenty feet back from there, and they're only ten feet from the side of the road. And somebody goes, what do we do now? Let's go see if we can get a variance. If you apply that the way it's written, you don't give it to them, no matter how bad you feel, you're not supposed to give it to them, because they did it. It was done by them, or if they bought the house from somebody else, it was done by the prior owner. That's, if you enforce that criteria the way it's written, you're not supposed to give them a variance for that. There may be other things that they can do, or they can try to do, but they really shouldn't get a variance. It's kind of harsh, but there you go. Okay? Is that...
It helps.
All right. Very quickly, because I've already taken more time than I should have. The other thing that you're going to get, in fact, you're going to get one as the first hearing that you have, and Jen, when I get done here, Jennifer's going to bring the application into you. You now have an, there is an application pending, it's an appeal from a decision in court enforcement. So that's actually the first kind you are going to see. And what happens in that case, our zoning ordinance makes the code enforcement officer, court enforcement officer, the first, sort of the first line of defense. It's his job to interpret the ordinance when somebody comes in and wants a building permit. Typically, that's, there are some other things, but let's talk about building permits, because that's what you're going to see the most often. So somebody comes in and files a building permit application with the code enforcement officer, he goes to look at the property, to see where it's going to be, make sure the setbacks are met, he reviews the ordinance to make sure it's something that can be done in the particular zone that the person lives in, and if all of, if he's satisfied with all of those things, he issues the permit. Then, there is the possibility that, and a butler, typically, is not happy with what his neighbor plans to build, and doesn't think that the code enforcement officer should have granted that permit. If he can come up with a reason, or sometimes even if he can't, he can file an appeal, saying that he believes that, and again, he has to fill out the application, so that you can determine, as a board, what he thinks the code enforcement officer has done wrong. So typically, what he's, what that's going to be, is he's going to have to argue that the code enforcement officer has incorrectly interpreted some provision of the zoning ordinance, and thereby granted a permit that he should not have granted. Now, it's possible, I suppose, that you could have an appeal where the person comes in and says, you, you granted a permit for, based on insufficient information in the permit application, or whatever, but typically, typically it is an argument that the code enforcement officer has misinterpreted or misapplied the zoning ordinance. So, obviously, at that point in time, you're going to have to familiarize yourself with whatever sections of the zoning ordinance are referenced in the application. You can certainly go further than that if you want to, but you're not required to, because it is the appellant's or the applicant's responsibility to tell you what you need to know to act on his application. In this case, you will hear from, in a case like that, you will hear from the code enforcement officer, who is required to attend even if he doesn't want to. Normally, he's going to want to, because he's defending his own, his own actions. You can decide, again, as a board, what order you want to take the presentations in, I think typically, you're probably going to have the applicant go first, simply because it's his application, but that's up to you. So you'll hear out the applicant, you'll hear out any witnesses that the applicant may have, it's basically the same procedure we talked about with variances. Then the code enforcement officer will tell you what he thinks, you'll have the opportunity to question anybody you want to question, you close the hearing, go into discussion. Now, you are not required, and this is important, I think, in sometime, in at least some of these, you are not required to make your decision this, at the same time that you hear the case. Sometimes you may, most of the time, you may very well be able to do that, and it's no big deal. But every once in a while, you, you may get a case where, say, wow, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on here, there's a lot of moving parts here, I need some more time to look at the ordinance, to look at the evidence. You can do that. You can table the application, you can table the appeal, and...
A sidewalk as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. We didn't even talk about sidewalks. You're almost always probably going to want to do a sidewalk in a variance situation. Whether you want to do it in a, an appeal situation is going to depend on the nature of the appeal, because some, some appeals, you may not need to see anything, because it may be, if the appeal is, he gave him a permit under this section of the ordinance and the, you can't. That's wrong, you can't give him, you don't really need to go see what it is, because in that case, the applicant's saying, he just can't do it. And you have to decide whether the code enforcement officer had the right to do it, or did not have the right to do it. But that's a good point. A lot of times, what you'll do is you'll schedule your sidewalk before the hearing, especially with variances. The sidewalk is considered part of the public hearing, so the public notice will contain information as to where, when the sidewalk is going to occur, where it's going to occur. If you decide during the course of a hearing that you're going to have a sidewalk, that you haven't otherwise had, then that's right, that's what you'd do. You would table it at that point, schedule the sidewalk, have the sidewalk either come back, you can either, it depends on why you're having it. In other words, you don't have to, you can still end the hearing, the hearing can close on that night, and you can still table it, but you don't necessarily have to reopen the hearing. You, the public hearing will continue for the purpose of you coming in and announcing your decision, but you don't necessarily, you're not necessarily going to take additional testimony, that again, is up to you. If you've heard everything you need to hear, you can still close the hearing, table it for your own consideration, and then come back on another date, another public hearing date to, to announce the decision. So that's entirely up to you.
Now, to make that decision, should it be done within a reasonable amount of time? What is considered like a reasonable amount of time, a few days, you know?
From the time that you, that you actually close the hearing, as opposed to closing off the testimony, unless we have to be careful when we, using the same term, I think, I don't have it right in front of me, I think you, I believe it's thirty days.
Thirty.
To make the, to issue a decision.
Well, I just, I wanted to make sure that was within a length of time.
Typically, I think you're going to find that most of the time, you're going to be able to make your decision the day, the night you hear.
Yeah, we usually make it that same night, you know?
Well, I've been to a couple that I've seen, like Chippies.
Yeah.
The other thing is, what are you considering a conflict of interest? Because that does happen.
Okay, that's a good question. Well, you know, some are obvious, if you're the owner of the property, you probably have a, if you're married to the owner of the property, you probably have a conflict. But generally speaking, if you have, you know, a financial interest, so for example, if you were a real estate broker, and, and this was a property that you had a listing on, that would be a conflict of interest, okay? If you were, statutorily, if you were an owner of a company, more than, if you had more than a ten percent ownership interest in a, in a corporation or an LLC that owned the land, you'd have a conflict of interest. Interestingly enough, if you just worked for a company that owned the land, you would not have a conflict of interest, just working, being an employee for the company. It has to be coupled with having at least a ten percent ownership interest, otherwise it's not considered to be a conflict, okay? So being an employee of a company that owns the land would not be a conflict. Sometime, you know, every once in a while, you may have one that is not crystal clear to the person who has it. So if one of you, if, if an issue arises, if somebody, either an applicant, or, or a person objecting, or another board member says, gee Lois, I think you have a, a conflict here, and you say, no, I don't think so, then the board's going to have to vote. The board's going to have to consider what the nature of the alleged conflict is, and determine whether they think you are conflicted out, and...
Well, normally, as a rule, and I've done this on other boards, if I feel it's a conflict of interest, I usually back out.
Yeah, and I think that's what most people do. I think most people tend to err on the side of caution. If there's, you know, if there's any question in their own mind, they just say, okay, you know?
Because my, my hardest thing here is, in this particular town, and in a few others, is family.
Yeah, and that is definitely not disqualifying.
A lot of it.
That is not disqualifying, being related to somebody who has an application is not disqualifying, so you just sort of have to make your own, you have to make your own call on that.
All right.
As long as you are not an owner of the land, just being related to that owner is not going to be a disqualif, is not going to be automatically disqualified. Because you're right, I mean, think about it, this, how many people do we have in this town? I mean, you...
To be honest, I'm actually ten...
And you know everybody.
...to this town, so...
Yeah. If you've got, if you've got an applicant, and let's say, four or five butlers who are opposing it, the chances are pretty good that you're going to be, have some sort of relationship with somebody in that room, you know, so...
But not.
Yeah, that's just, just a judgment call you have to make, or if you can't make it yourself, the board makes it for you. Anything else I can help with?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. You might want to, well...
And remember, I'm always available.
That's what I was just going to say, if we have questions for you, we go through the chair to get to you at this point?
Yeah, I would...
It's usually the best, probably the best way.
We don't, I noticed that on some of these other committees, people calling up...
Right.
...when they shouldn't be, they're not in charge, and they're just putting their two cents in when, and harassing them.
They, as far as working with the town administrator, you know, she wants, if you're the chair, you request the information, or you bring things forward to her, not her, her, and him.
Right, right.
Okay? Because then you end up with multiple people asking the same darn question, and how many times do I need to ask that, answer that question?
I don't think we've ever called you.
No, not that I know of.
We try to do it ourselves.
On the, on that issue, the last thing I'll, I'll mention, unless there's another question, is that, in, in terms of me, there is, there is a bit of a difference between a variance and an application, and that's why, that's why we're not sitting here talking about the application, excuse me, the appeal. That's why we're not sitting here talking about the appeal that, that's coming in here, because with a, with a variance, I'm always going to be available unless it's my house, okay? I may be called upon to represent the code enforcement officer in an appeal, so at that point, I become an advocate in front of you, so I can't be involved in your discussions or your consideration of, of issues on the appeal, because as a town attorney, I may represent the code enforcement officer, I may not, they may not want me, but that possibility exists.
Because I know Kenny has said, in one of the other meetings we've had, a gathering last year, he'd also said that to get this far, it's because he's stretched out in every limit that he possibly can do to make this work, and in that, to get to here is something that, you know, he's done what he can to subside it, and then it has a point where he can't do it.
Yeah, well, you know, you've got, you've got two different kinds of appeals, obviously. Most, probably most often, you get your appeal from somebody who is unhappy because they didn't get what they wanted from the code enforcement officer, but every once in a while, you will get an appeal from somebody who is not the person who applied for the permit, but somebody who is not happy that the permit was issued. Okay?
And you'll find that out in a few minutes.
I've got a bad feeling.
Okay? Because I already knew what's coming.
I already got a bad feeling.
Any, anything else for me? Anything else I can help with, any other questions?
That's the only thing off the top of my head, but that's, that's a start anyways. Considering the board is, is kind of new at this, I know I have a few things I'd like to go over. I, probably back when I first started, I had Bob Buttrick and Stan Smith on the board, and Stan Smith's motto was, if you own the land, do what you want. And that, that happens, but with all these variants and ordinance, you can't just do that. And we had, if you want to go, Joe, it's up to you, you know?
Well, yeah, I'm going to go, because I know, unless you have more for me, because...
Well, when she brings in that information, just means now...
Yeah, she, she wants to come in and give you that application before you adjourn, and I can't be here when she does that, so...
Yeah, he can't, he can't be here.
Well, you can't talk about it anyway, so, you know, just get it so they can go over. But most of our variances that we had back, like 2004 to 2014, was like waterfrontage. And waterfrontage, like he says, it's locked in. If they want to build something that's within a hundred feet of the water, too bad, as much as you might want them to, or if they just want to build a patio, and it's only ten feet in toward the water, and it's not part of the house, it's just a patio. No, if it's attached to the house and extension of the house, they can't do it, whether they like it or not, and we've had a few people, and I think yours was on Passon Point, the house you were talking about, it's on a big hill, because I was looking at that one and going, I don't know if I'd vote for that one, but I didn't make it, and they passed it, so things can happen.
We did it, we did it when we knew Bob wasn't going to be...
Yeah, I know, probably it is.
It passed because we, the gentleman was able to...
That's your job.
...roll over a little bit.
Well, thank you, Joe.
Good luck, everyone.
I'll see you later.
I'll send you a little...
You don't have to.
But I was going to also ask you, will we get a free minute? Do you want me, when they do a copy, do you want me to have them, have Jennifer burn me a copy for this board in particular, so we do have a copy for ourselves, because that actually goes out...
Copy of what?
Their internet stuff actually goes out to YouTube and all that stuff. Do you want a particular copy, when they burn a copy for the town, do you want a copy for us?
The town's going to have it.
No, I wouldn't say we haven't.
Okay, I'm just, don't know how...
Yeah, no, I understand. Out of all the variances and appeals we've had, we've had a few threaten they're going to take it to Superior Court, it never made it to Superior Court, or the judge ruled in our favor. A lot of it, like he says, they kind of favor us, but you've got to be careful what you're saying do. One of the things is that when you go, we usually sidewalk an hour before the meeting. In the middle of winter, though, I mean, the meeting's at seven, you're not going to see anything at six o'clock at night, so we're going to have to figure out what we can do if you want to sidewalk. It does help, because it shows you what their problem is, or it's too close to the water, or it's a small piece of land, you got, damn, you know, there's nothing you can work with here, but you have an idea. But you can't talk about the case with each other. That's, it's almost like a HEPA regulation, you cannot talk or discuss about any of the cases coming up with each other, going to the site, or even coming back from the site is a no-no. Or even, you're going to get to think tonight, so you can prepare what you want to do, but you can't even bring it up when you meet somewhere for coffee or something like that, you can't bring up the subject matter whatsoever. That has backfired, because it has gotten back to the owners or whatever, saying, oh yeah, they already said no on this, or even before the meeting, and that's highly illegal and all that, so that's one thing you've got to be careful about, is, is talking about the subject matter prior to the appeal.
See, welcome to Acton, everything's a rumor.
You know, normally, you could talk about it on other committees, but not in this case, you can't, because it's going to end up in court then, you know? I'd like to just go over briefly what I do, or what I've done on appeals, and it's basically what Joe says, but I read what, what we are doing, which is either appeal or the variance, then I will read the applications, which states his name, affiliation, or whatever, nature of the interests of the hearing, and neighbors or interested parties can put, put their comment in, but I read what the thing is about. First of all, I've got to make sure that the application is filled out right. Usually Ken Paul checks it over, and if it's not downright, he tells him, you've got to redo it again, it's not right, it's not filled out, the answers, you're left the answer blank. All four questions are going to be filled out, even if it's a stupid question, it's which is kind of weird, they got to fill it out, and it's got to be done properly. And if not, he returns it to them, and if it passes, and I read it, and I don't like the way it's written up or said, then I will have them redo it too. And usually, that's the grounds, when we had the meeting, I go over the application, pride of them to come there. But after I read what the, the hearing is about a variance, the applicants can make their statements, whatever they want to say. Thank you. The applicants can make, say whatever they wanna say about the property and the problems with it, and what they can do about it. And then when they're done, we usually get the neighbors, if they have something to say, a butters. It's gotta be a butters, you know, somebody lives across the street or just as nosy and wanna ask questions. It's not, we're not here for you. We have, and I'm kinda strict on this. I haven't had a problem yet because I usually put them in their place right off, and I don't put up with too much rigmarole running around. So the applicants and the neighbors then can talk about what they want. The code enforcement then will come in and say what, what the variance is about, or this hearing, or why it's being appealed, or, or what his ruling is and why he ruled that way. So we hear his thing. And we can, afterwards, we can ask questions. The applicant can ask the code enforcement questions. At that point, he can still ask questions after Ken Paul says something. He can ask some questions. The parties can rebut any of the statements they may, might have said prior because of what maybe Ken Paul says or whatever. They can rebut it if they want. Once the phase of the meeting, the butters, the complainant, and all have to, spoken, it's now closed to them. And like he says, they're still here when we're talking about it. And she might say something that they don't like that. Well, you already had your side. This is now between us, even though it's in the public, and they hear what we gotta say, whether good or bad, and they wanna put their two cents in, they're done. They had their chance to talk. They said what they had to say. And so they're, they're out. We can, when we discuss among ourselves, if the question is up, they might wanna ask them, like, you didn't bring up this, what about this or that? Or could you have done this or that? You're allowed to talk to them. But they can't put their two cents in when we just confer among ourselves. And we see if there's any questions, again, among the board members. We all open with each other. We talk. You might have questions about this, or you might not be clarified on that, and I might ask him to clarify that situation, you know? But like you say, control it, so we don't have everybody put their two cents in. We gotta have five members maximum. Takes four members to pass it. We gotta have the four members. It can't be three, and one iffy, or it can't be, oh, I abstain. We gotta get the four out of five members to vote, whatever they wanna vote. If we only have four members at the meeting, that's why we have alternates too, because somebody might not show up. If we only have four people, they all have to pass it. That's the minimum quorum. And we give the applicant the alternative of making it another night when we have five of them. Because to have all four agree on it could be difficult in this situation. He might want that fifth person, it might give him a little leeway. So one person can be against, but four's gotta be, make a decision which way they're gonna go. Four members maximum, them need to be four yeses and noses. Oh, that's what I forgot to ask Joe, I have to ask. If I remember correctly, but I'll verify, I used to have the alternates could put their two cents in while they're here. They're allowed to ask questions. They can hear, they're gonna be sitting here anyways, hearing everything. It's not like we've got five members, you can go home. We want them to see and get the experience of what's going on too, you know, not just...
Which only would make sense.
Huh?
Which only would make sense, because if one of us is missing, the other one's gonna have to take the position.
Right. They gotta show up, and if we still have enough, they can still be here
Right.
and participate and get a feeling of what this is all about. The only thing is, they can't vote. They can't have a say on that or anything else, but they can ask questions or whatever, maybe help us out or whatever, but that's as far as they can go with that. But I gotta double check on that. And if denied, which, if the person's denied an application, then he has forty-five days to go file in Superior Court after our decision. Can't do anything before, and they can't do it two months or six months after the fact. It's gotta be done within forty-five days.
That was kinda the other reason I asked how long the process was gonna be, you know, we're gonna drag it out.
Normally, we get done, we go through this process pretty fast. I mean, usually an hour, hour and a half, we get done. We don't delay too much. We've had a few problems where...
But if, if we have to table it for some reason,
Right.
we have thirty days to...
Yeah, we've never tabled it. We try to resolve it then.
Resolve it then.
There's gotta be, I mean, we've had motions where everybody voted, and nobody seconded it. Nobody liked the motion or whatever. So we say, well, who else got a motion that we can, you know, accept or second, and then put it to vote. But sometimes you have a hard time getting somebody to come up with a motion that will cover everything. We can make adjustments on the variance. We had one on, on Great East Lake where, it was like a postage stamp where the house could be built. But he was limited to that, that spot. He wanted to be able to move it over twenty feet. No, the only spot that he could build in was here. And the thing is, it was kinda the hairy one because he was representing, look, I think it was attorney representing somebody, but we had to give him a time factor when he can build. Because we don't wanna give a variance, and then the guy's gonna sell the land, or resell it, and say, well, we got a variance on this, it's now your baby, you can build here. If we're doing it, we're doing it for you. You have forty-five days to start building, or you're not gonna be able to build at all. Because some people do it just to get that variance in there, get approved. Well, not if you're gonna build for two more years, you know, and they'd say, well, I got a variance two years ago. That's not the way it works. If you're gonna, you know, get approval for a variance, you gotta do it then.
It's supposed to be a hardship, that's why.
Huh?
It's supposed to be a hardship.
Yeah, and a lot of people will try to get a variance, even though they don't plan on doing something, you know? On Muslim Lake, we had a house, a piece of, again, property. A lot of people buy these property thirty, forty years ago. Of course, we didn't have variances. We didn't have ordinances, and, and his property was too close to the water. He had just enough where he could put a tent up. And that's it. It's a shame. He's had it for forty years, and I says, well, in forty years, they came up with all these ordinances, and it's state law, it's you can't build within a hundred feet. It's not even a town ordinance, it's a state law. It's no, giving no exceptions to that rule when it comes to the state ordinance on that, especially water rights. So of course, he could only build a tent. Now, what happened with one of the members was sorta new, but she kinda yelled at the neighbor of the, a butter of this property because he has twenty-seven acres. Well, why don't you sell him an acre so he could build a house on the property? It was completely out of protocol. It's not for her to say something like that. And it was completely wrong, you know, and so I had to apologize, and but, because it's not our position to say, well, this butters got all the land, why don't you give him some, you know, so the poor guy can build a house. Maybe he doesn't wanna house in front of his property, you know, so we gotta take that into consideration. We do come in weird circumstances. We had some gentleman in here that appealed a variance, but then he got denied. He said, well, wait a minute, I'm a disabled vet. I'm suing you for discrimination because I'm disabled. There's an application just for disabled people on variances, and it's gotta be filled just for the disabled people. So the application is null and void because he didn't apply for, as a disabled person. He applied as a regular citizen, and then after he got denied, says, well, I'm a disabled person. So it was denied, but you'd have to fill out the whole application, go through the whole thing again, but no guarantees you're gonna get it. And, but he was trying, hoping that, you know, we would give away. People play, play on your sympathy, you know, just trying to get it. I've had this property, you know, I know my neighbors and all. So it's, it's tough. It's a tough decision. It's something you guys gotta make. And unfortunately, whether it's good or bad or otherwise, I mean, we have passed where people have gotten the variance. It's not locked in, in stone, or written in stone that they're not gonna get it because Ken Paul says otherwise, or there might be a reason for, that we can give the variance, which we can do, you know? Even though it says you might not be able to be ten feet from the road or whatever, but there's a way we can, we can grant it, you know, for any reason. It's a tough committee, but we don't do it that often. I mean, like, Danny, I don't know, when was the last time you had a variance?
Three, three, four years ago, I think?
So we met last week.
Yeah, so...
We never, I had a meeting, but, you know.
And so what we used to do is, we'd meet at least once a year, just to go over things, refresh our memory, and just to get together and make sure everybody's alive, you know? I mean, just, you know, you can go a whole year without seeing anybody, or three years without seeing anybody. So it's not that hard, but when it is, you're responsible for the decision that's made, you know? So you gotta be careful, consider it, and that's why we get these applications ahead of time.
Do we actually have a list of the questions that Kenny asked?
Yeah, well...
And is it in any books, or is it just...
Should be part of the application.
Yeah, but I didn't know if it was in any of this that we have.
Questions that, no.
I just, is there any possible way that we can get a list of the questions so we know what we're gonna do?
Whoop, I'm sorry. Questions that you wanna ask?
No, the four that he has to ask, that they have to answer.
Well, that's part of the, the application process. We'll have that on.
Yes, you know, on the application he has here, all the four questions were etched out. They were etched out because...
Can we get a copy of that? Can we get a blank copy of that?
That's what I was thinking. Can we get a blank copy of just the four questions?
Usually, I have, make sure all the members get a copy.
Everybody gets one.
Uh, she only made up one here, though.
Do you want me to see if Jennifer will make up a few more? She's pretty good fucked up.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Because what we'd like you to do is go over it, and then you can look up in your ordinance book what ordinance Ken's talking to, why are they appealing it, and, you know, look into this prior to the meeting.
Usually, it's a package for, each person gets a package of the application.
Yeah.
Do you want her to make some for the ones that are missing also, so you can give them off?
Well, I don't know, hopefully, they'll be here in time for the meeting, you know? I don't know when they're gonna have this, this is a shure land appeal. Okay.
Have a do eight coffees?
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
So we can only discuss this, or, okay, this particular appeal that we are about to deal with.
Right.
We can only discuss it when we're at a meeting.
Yeah. And that's gonna be at the, that's gonna be at the hearing itself.
Yeah, we can't, you know, hey Lois, you wanna come over for a coffee on Tuesday, and we can talk about this?
Yeah, right. And that's why even when you go to the, the site to see what the variance is, and you can't say, well, later, wow, you know, that's too close to the water, I ain't gonna give it to them, or, or talk about it, discuss what you plan on voting prior to the meeting, because that's a big no-no, and you could be up a lawsuit.
So even if, even if we all met, we got there, looked around, we still can't ask each other questions, or...
No. No, you can't, about the land,
Yeah.
or questions about where they wanna build the house, and all, but you can't talk among yourselves about, wow, I don't think this guy deserves it, you know, he's an idiot, or, you know, and...
You should, you should, you should ask questions. That's the whole point.
Well, that's kinda it, because I know when I went out with Chip a couple of times, because we had to do it for conservation with him.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the same way. It was, we didn't discuss what was going on.
No, at the site, anything to do with the site or what they plan on doing, you can add, even ask the owner. Usually, the owner's there too. But you can't just discuss among yourselves, going there or coming back, or...
Our personal thoughts.
Make any, no, comments, it's gonna come back to hurt or bite us in the butt, you know? It's not like any of these others where you can talk among each other and everything. It's not a big deal. But this, this is, is strictly confidential, more or less.
Yeah, it's like...
Through, after the hearing.
It's part of the HEPA, so it's...
Yeah, yeah, sorta. So I've done, I've done two appeals on Ken, and they both ruled in his favor. Because a lot of times, that's why you have the ordinance book. Look it up and read it, and make sure that's the right ordinance or whatever it pertains to. And if you have a question, you can ask him about that, Ken Paul about the ordinance, but you can't talk about the case itself.
Right.
You know? But if you have a question about the ordinance or whatever, you can do that. But mostly, you're on your own, basically, the, figure out what's what. So when I'm done talking to these people and asking questions, I'm gonna ask for a motion. And there'll be somebody in, of the group here that's gonna have to make a motion, what they feel the motion should be, or approve or disapprove or whatever, or even with an exception or something like that, you know? But like I said, you gotta be careful what you say, because it's gonna end up in court. It's gonna cost them...
Have you ever gotten that, to that far with everything you all have done at this point?
What's that?
Have you ever gone to court beyond that?
No, I've had a few that's gonna take us to court. But either they just pull the hot air, they're pissed off, which you can't blame them. I mean, people own this land, you know, told they can't do anything, and they get ticked off, or they might have filed too late, because you only got, they only got forty-five days. They can't wait a year later and then try to bring it to court. Ain't gonna work that way. Or if they did take it to court, we never got notified, they ruled in our favor, so then that kind of notifies.
Or we're able to come up with a different outcome, because we were able to work with the person and figure something out, so we actually overturned it.
Yeah, because I know Kenny has said several times, he tries to work and make us the last resort.
Oh, sure.
What happened?
Yeah, yeah, no.
The last resort.
Like I said, we don't meet that often. I mean, I've done twelve, fifteen cases since the time I've been on here, but the, you know, two or three maybe a year is a lot for us. Maybe four, but other than that, you can go three years. That's why at least you gotta meet once in a while and go over things. And I have a few cases back, I say that we can go over and practice and see what your decision would be on, on those cases and those appeals.
So we have a case before us?
Yes, again, it's on Ken Paul, though. It's not on the variance.
I, I understand that. I already know what the case is.
You're right. It has to do probably with some variance of some sort, but it's on his decision is what we're gonna be hearing the thing on.
It's an appeal.
And again, we can't go into it too much.
Is it appeal or, or, is it appeal or a variance?
It's a, it's an appeal.
On Ken Paul, which, like I said, I've had a couple on, on Ken Paul.
So are we gonna talk about that tonight, or...
No, we can't talk about it at all. But we gotta wait for Brenda or something to tell us when the date's gonna be. In the meantime, you can look over the application.
Yeah.
And again, again, just be discreet about showing it to anybody or talking about it, because it could come back and bite us in the butt. Anything else?
So until they notify us of the hearing,
Right.
we are on our own
Yeah.
to go ahead and review the application,
Yeah.
the appeal application,
Yeah.
and determine whether or not, look up the statutes, etc., etc.
Research, right, yeah, yeah.
And determine, you know, whether or not we appeal.
That's why we have the ordinance books, and if it's not in the ordinance books or something weird, then, like I said, you can ask Ken Paul.
Come up with your questions you might have
Yeah.
for them.
But again, I, I don't want somebody who nagging Ken Paul every time they had something come up and call him twenty times about the same thing, you know? Thank you, dear.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep. How does he get away with that?
He's passionate.
I'm sorry.
What's that?
I'll tell you after the camera stops.
Ah, yeah, and like I said, back in those days, we didn't have the camera. We had Dolores, uh, Virginia show up once in a while with a portable, and that was it. I guess now you do everything.
This is actually works out really well. He comes, they come to most every meeting, I mean, I think, got it for the last
You got everybody that one?
five, six years. I think this one, one meeting that he, that they haven't been able to report, and it's only because it was a conflict and they didn't realize or something.
No, I've had one or two members sit out in the audience. You're allowed to say you have a conflict of interest with that party, which it happens, because we know everybody in town anyways, but it's gotta be a conflict. If you feel you can't be neutral about it, then you can sit out in the audience and listen and all that, but you just can't participate, then, then we have the alternate fill in for you. Don't be, don't be shy about holding back or say, well, I wanna...
It, it may happen once in a while, maybe, because I, obviously, I've been around for a while.
Yeah. So, you know, I know most of the members too that go to the variance, but a lot of them are from out of state, you know, and they wanna build up here, or they wanna do something, but, and you're gonna get a few of them that will do something without applying to Ken Paul, without filing for a permit. They just go ahead and do it because they feel, well, I own the house, I own the property, I'll do what I want.
There's somebody in town that did that.
And at some point, it, it comes back to us that they did something like build a patio. We had a lot of patios built too close to the water. We had blacktop driveway that led next to the house that water just washed right into the lake, which is a big no-no when you have an opening like that, and the water just washes in. You get all types of people that do things, and then we get caught up, and then they ask for a variance. Well, it's kinda tough, and it's tired when you tell them, nope, gotta rip it out, you know, gotta take it down. And then Ken Paul, it's up to him to make sure that it's done within a period of time. But we've had them rip a house down. We've had them have them move the house, or they actually had to move the foundation, like he said, they didn't measure right. Well, that's not our problem. That's not for us to say, oh, okay, well, you made a move. You have professional contractors that do this stuff. They should know what they're doing. And if they do something wrong, then they had to extend the foundation and wipe out what was too close to whatever it was the ordinance was about. So it's fun. It's interesting, you know? We don't meet that often, so you don't have to tie yourself up over this, but when we get something like this, then it's up to us to resolve it.
Well, this will be, this will be a good one.
Yeah, this is, and it's...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion accepted. Second?
Second.
All fine. Thank you. And if there's any questions, call me, and I'll try to help you out, whatever. Like I said, just be careful on the case, say that it doesn't get out, or you talk about it, where it's gonna get back to the owners.
Are we all set?